We are on the community corrections, we're in Deering County too as well, and so we, the information we received about the subcommittee, it's all amended, so if we need any direction or guidance, I'd be more than happy to reach out to them and they can give you an idea of what they kind of did, because they're dealing with like about quarter of a million dollars is what they're dealing with, so, but it would have been substantially more than what we're dealing with, so, but any help I can be, just let me know, I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay, so.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so that should be tabled again for next month. I'll reach out to those people and we'll see the grant results, so, okay, we'll move on to new business, and I think, Mr. Bond, thank you, John just walked in, so, would you go around this way?
Well, I've got new info for you from what I sent you this afternoon, the state dropped a few more numbers on us late in the day, well, their numbers.
Well, I'm not sure you see that.
No, I mean, they're not terrible, but, you know, it's.
Could be worse, right?
Yeah, yeah, it could be worse. But everything is down more than we expected, so that was kind of the big news, we actually had to adjust, annual numbers down a little bit. But, so basically, we've got, everything's in through March, by the end of the week, we should have, well, actually, that was what came in today, so no, that's, what you see on the sheet in bold is what, on the bottom, on that bottom box is what, what has been actually received so far. And then the others, the ones that are not bolded, those are, those are projections, we were basically, everything was based on a 5% decrease from last year, and they haven't necessarily gone over that consistently, but they have a couple of times, so we're, we bumped that up to 10, that's why the, the projection number's down.
So we're looking at 10%, we're talking about 10% loss.
I don't, I try to keep that somewhere where we won't actually hit it, I mean, but it could get close to that, I mean, you know, some of these, like, we've got one that's, where they're down 16%, there could be a lot of reasons for that, I mean, it could just be, a year ago, there were a lot of weekends in that month, or something, you know, there could be, or, you know, something that, sometimes it's because the year before, there was a really, really good month, and you just can't repeat it, when you're looking at one versus the other.
Have you had a conversation with Peter?
Uh, yeah, a couple of them over the course of the last month, of course, you know, they're worried about the road construction, and the detours are still popping up different places, and, you know, some of those messages are confusing, you know, when you, when you get a sign in VV about a road that's going to be closed, you know, on the other end of the county, that's what, what a, what somebody who doesn't come this way every day thinks when they drive up on that, you know, they may turn around and go back, if they think they can't get there. A lot of that, if, if that's driving their numbers down, it should improve as people get used to it this summer, or at least, of course, it's going to be November by the time they're done with all the closures, and we know we're going to have closures next year too, so, I mean, this is kind of a reality for a while.
We're looking just right at sub going to the other shut, I read this right.
Yeah, if you go, if you go clear down to the, the bottom, the last number that's highlighted there, that's, that's what would be left after you paid the 10% out to the neighboring counties.
We budgeted for this.
Well, that was, you're a hundred thousand away.
Yeah, I know.
Thank God we went with six instead of eight.
We budgeted for this.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the budgeting number historically, I mean, going back several years, was always eight million, and we're falling under that, so that's one of the reasons, you know, gross, so that's, that's one of the reasons why we were, you know, trying to keep an eye on that, but now that these have been adjusted down a little more, I, I mean, I think this is safe for, as we get more months, we get a better picture, if they have a couple that are really awful, we may have to go in and do it again, but, you know, everyone that comes in 5% low is another one, we don't have to worry about coming in 20% low, so we're, you know, we're filling the picture in, it's.
Yeah, and the thing about, you know, that, budgeted on six million, but they get a percentage of what we get, so, we don't get it, they don't get it, so, we're not going to be giving away six million if we don't get six million, so, we're still covered okay, we just didn't overshoot too far, in fact, you know, it's a little scary, but.
Well, it's the same way for your 10% off the top too, that goes to neighboring counties, that'll go down as the, as the total goes down.
If we don't get it, they don't get it.
You said the forecast number are based on 5%?
Uh, they're, they're, those are based on 10. Yeah, that would be, that would be if what comes to the county gets knocked down by 10%, and sometimes, when they hit the tax brackets will affect that, it doesn't look like that's the issue right now, if we're, we're a little bit down gross revenue wise, or for the, or gross receipts for, for the casino, but not enough that they're, they were in a different tax bracket a year ago.
But if you, but if you take your seven million, there's what, five months left in the fiscal year?
Um, well, these go through the calendar, so.
Yeah, there's eight months.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it, it could still move around.
We're not a good trend.
15%.
Let's not get ourselves, this is not a good trend.
You know, if the rest of the year was just a horse, then you're going to still eat up that other nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of, I mean, we, we try to put a little bit in there as a buffer, so that, you know, if they come in low one month, we've got something to carry, if they come in low every month, or if it keeps trending down, you know, that's, then we'll have to go back and revise them.
Yeah, and if that happens, just for me sitting here thinking about that, if that happens, we know out of that revenue, we have to have our benefit package, something like that, so, and we did it during COVID year, we ended all gifting, well, we only gifted two, two major things, and we ended everything else, and that could happen again if we get, because we have to have enough money to do our benefits, we have to have that.
And I, in July, you'll have a pretty good idea what, what the rest of the year's going to look like, because that'll be when, when the bulk of it is in.
It doesn't look great, but we're not too scared yet, right?
And the big, the big payment in July is, it's, that dollar amount is driven by other factors, I mean, it could, it won't necessarily go down when the others do, it could, it could even go up when the others go down, just depending on what the rest of the state does.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions?
Just some bad news.
We went road closure.
Well, hopefully they're going to get all these precision slides fixed and this and that, people just.
Is that his number, is that his biggest issue, is the road closure?
That's, that's the one that comes up the most, I mean, and mainly because, you know, it's a different road every year, I mean, they're, they're bringing a lot of people in that don't come to the county for anything else.
He's the easiest one to blame.
Forty-two should be opening up.
Anything on the west side of Cincinnati, anything on the side of Cincinnati, comes to Lardsburg, and they come down that way, they're not going to drive from over there, from Tri-County, for instance, they're not going to drive through the city and come down seven, I want to come to Belterra, they're not going to do that, so, that's all the traffic, that's laws.
And they may not even know they can do that, I mean, we, we know that, because we live here, but, you know, they may not know if they can get there that way either, and they're, they're just literally starting out driving, and then getting all these crazy suggestions from Google Maps about what road they ought to be on.
So Lardsburg should do good, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could help the ones up the road.
Just stop at Lardsburg.
All right, thank you, John. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Weaver.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to, to talk a little about our funding for our summer system position, just as a refresher, summer system position is about forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars for that position this summer, twenty-five hundred of that comes from our budget line, I thought you guys have approved, the other twelve, twenty-five hundred comes from the Earn Indiana program, that gets reimbursed, that twenty-five hundred goes reimbursed back to the county, so we have saved money over the last eighteen to twenty years by using that program, unfortunately, that was here last year, and we kind of talked about the same issue, we have less and less applicants that are Earn Indiana eligible, again, so that's happened again this year, so we have no person that is eligible for that Earn Indiana money, so that reimbursement will unfortunately not happen, so we're asking for some additional funding to fund that summer system position, and, and I do believe in kind of sacrificing when I can, and help, help the county when we can, so, I'd like to offer a thousand dollars for my budget, with the additional twenty-five hundred that would have been approved, and I'm asking for a thousand to fifteen hundred to kind of fund that position, so that was kind of my ask tonight, the summer system, of course, is extremely important for our position in, in the summertime, so.
How long does this work out?
It usually runs, what, we typically get to college students, usually like the second week of May to the first or second week of August.
You did this last year and then ended up finding somebody to.
We did, like, two days after I asked, we had somebody, but we don't know if that's going to happen again, if it does, obviously, we start with the program up and running, we could, and you'll get that reimbursement, but we just, as of right now, we have no one.
So you're asking for thousands to?
Fifteen hundred at the very most, yeah.
John, when your budget comes up, you can't put this into your budget as a request?
That's my question, for an extra, I'd love to do that, yes.
I mean, I, I think that's what makes the most sense, because you're, all we're doing is moving money, it's basically an appropriation and an ask, so I would suggest that's what you do.
I'd love to do that.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we fund for New to fifteen hundred, like they need for their summer program, and hopefully you'll find somebody that means.
That'd be awesome, but, yeah.
We don't have to do that, and that's going to just have to come out of our money, right? Because it's, yeah.
What was left of that other money?
The quality of life, I'm assuming, you didn't tell me what fund, I'm assuming this was yours, after you paid the prom, there was eleven hundred dollars still in that account.
Well, he's asking us for a thousand.
Well, it'd be interesting if we had, if we had a college student for that twelve weeks, but with the Earn Indiana not, not part of the situation, we could have just maybe a teacher's aid, the only one works for eight weeks as opposed to the twelve weeks, so you have that little variance in there depending.
I'm sorry, were you asking for a thousand or fifteen hundred?
A thousand, two fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred would be the max.
About eleven hundred.
Okay.
Eleven hundred.
I redo my motion for eleven hundred dollars on the quality of life fund.
It's eleven hundred.
This is, this is a general fund, this is in Department 123, extension, correct?
Yes.
You know what, I take the state's debate.
She gets the, here?
We've got a balance in there.
There's a balance in that account?
The general fund for the whole.
When you say 123, you're talking about his specific.
The department and the general, it's 123, so like this is, you know, underneath like his salary and.
Tanya's and Julie's and.
This is listed in there.
A twenty-five hundred is what we have currently.
You have twenty-five hundred in that line item?
Yeah.
So I could transfer it from the quality of life into that.
It's a celebration.
Yeah, I can transfer it from the quality of life to that fund there, you don't think I can?
Well, these are the ones that, like, I'm pretty sure I know how it is, but when I hesitate, I ask Jackie.
That's fine, I can ask her tomorrow.
I think that, we don't, we don't need a problem, so I, I.
I just know.
If you're not comfortable with it, you're the auditor.
Just make sure it comes from the right spot, I'm good with it, just make sure it comes from the right.
I agree, I agree, that makes a lot of sense, so I would, I'd reach out to Jackie just in case.
So, let me, they, they said next year for you to put that in your budget, you do have a line item already there.
Correct.
You just need to up the ante a little bit.
Yes, we'll go from twenty-five hundred.
So we don't need new line item created for that next year.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor right there. Take that body line balance up, eleven hundred balance, please, you made a motion to, to the, for New extension, who said, Andy, you said it, all right? Yeah, you're going to check on a.
As I said, can we make it per?
Per.
Check on Jackie.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I have to email her tomorrow anyways.
So.
And I'll let you guys know.
Okay. Thank you all follow me on this, okay, so.
Please vote on it for Jackie, buddy.
Yes, yes, Jackie blesses it, then we can vote, yeah, we go ahead and vote if she blesses it. We'll go ahead and vote, she is blessed.
So if she says no, you cannot do that, you've got to go around this way, I mean, it's just a different way to do it, but I can't imagine not taking it out of there and.
All right, motion on the floor, lose eleven hundred dollars, that one, fund for Mr. Weaver, please, made motion, Andy second, all in favor?
Hang on, more discussion.
More discussion.
Just a quick question, if she doesn't bless that, he's, he still gets eleven hundred out of the general fund, correct?
We have stopped the motion.
Motion is for it to become out of the quality of life fund.
Okay, so we revisit it?
That probably revisit, if she comes back and says no, so, that, that's what I would like.
Okay, I just want to, I wanted to be clear for myself.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, we haven't.
Well, it works, we're ready, we're actually ready to post it tomorrow, if, if, if we can get that far, but, because usually we, we do interviews in March, but we're, because we're ineligible, so now it would put us a little bit of a bind waiting till May.
It's, it's just the logistics of how to transfer, and you have to do it the right way, so that's, the board, the accounts are done right, and.
I mean, if it's a matter of me taking it from the quality of life to the council to put it in there, find out something.
I think that's true, you should check with her, make sure you can do that. Okay, and kind of, she should hear back from Jackie, she's really quick at responding. Award discussion. Okay, so all in favor of the motions there? Okay?
Well, thank you.
Sorry for confusion.
Oh, it's fine.
No, that's, ask everybody, just, sorry. Lordy, Lord, you help me, okay. Well, next on the agenda is Cindy.
She had to leave, so she said she'll come back next month.
Okay, okay.
She's at another meeting.
I understand that, okay, well, we're going to write all down that funding request, Mr. Scranton.
All right, Lee Ann said earlier, I'm not a good public speaker, she'll walk up right there as I can. My name's Harold Scranton, I'm the current president of East Enterprise Fire Department, along with being a safety officer, firefighter, and EMT for the Department of Community. I come before you today to request extra funding to help with the cost of repairs for a fire apparatus that primarily serves Florence, York community, Switzerland County and surrounding communities, when requested for mutual aid, and replace, replace several sets of firefighter turnout gear that has come to end of life per 2020 NFPA 1851, Chapter 10, Section da da da. This will allow the fire department to be in clock compliance with NFPA standard by providing our valuable volunteers with the proper PPE required to complete their duties in the community. In October 2022, we made a decision to purchase the gear to be in compliance, we got the ball motion, or got the ball rolling. In December of 2022, we had a fire truck go down in Florence York. The cost of repairs to get that truck back up was twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, I gotta go back, I skipped the bunker gear, the bunker gear to replace our bunker gear that's out of compliance right now, we ordered thirteen sets of interior gear at a cost of twenty-eight hundred and eighty-three dollars a set, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. We ordered two sets of exterior that the department's paying for, and the reason why we got exterior versus the interior gear is we got some guys that's not certified to do interior attack, so we went with a cheaper set of gear for them, car fires, brush fires, accidents, and then we have four members that opted to buy their own exterior gear because it's lighter, it's cooler, and if you ever gotten fire gear when it's eighty degrees outside, it's very taxing on the body. So that's a total cost of forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, that with the truck repairs, we're going to spend sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six, forty-nine. I come to you guys tonight to see if you'll split that difference with us and help us make that, to pay for that. The council's portion would be thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three, and we will match that. I wouldn't come, but last year, what we get off Riverboat was dropped to the eight million, or from eight million to the six million, and you guys said if we got, we're not having enough money to run, come see you, I'm here to see you. We lost.
How much were you asking for?
Thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, that's the council giving us half the money, I'll take the other half out of what savings we got to put towards that.
You approach any trustees, I like that, yeah.
Trustees don't have any extra, and actually, York Township, what I got from them last year was the money that they had to pay back, they didn't have the money.
Harold, aren't trustees told you they didn't have any money?
Some of them don't.
Some, some of them don't.
Did you talk to all of them?
I can only go to the trustees that fund my department, I can't go to the trustees.
And York doesn't have any money?
Yes, Kelly, correct.
Uh, Kelly's pretty tight too, once meeting, yeah, I mean, I'm on the advisory board, it's pretty tight.
Harold, the, the gear, do you guys get like a better deal by doing all at once?
Yes, yes, and honestly, we can put firemen in old gear that's not NFPA compliant, then we lose our ISO rating, we lose our ISO rating, taxpayers pay more on their insurance.
What is your current rate?
Five. And if you look up that, it's pretty damn good for volunteer firefighters.
Fire chief association, they can't chip in, or won't chip in, what are they?
We, we still keep, I can't speak for the fire chiefs, I know, I am a big proponent of the, the safety program we run the kids through, that trailer's going to have to be replaced, we need a training center, so, we worked hard to save that money, they worked hard to save that money. We've still got stuff we're going to have to buy down the road to replace trucks, I've got three trucks that will be past thirty years old in the next three years.
Which truck had all this, was that the latter one?
No, it's the main tanker out of Florence York.
Okay.
It is a backup pumper and a tanker, carries twenty-five hundred gallons of water for the water shuttles, but it can also be, be used as a pumper if we need it as a backup pumper, and that is the only tanker we have in Florence York.
Okay, this profit loss statement we got here, is this both Station One and Station Two?
Yes, East Enterprises is all under one, yes.
Okay.
And as you can see, last year, we lost ten thousand dollars, and that was with carrying over a balance the year before, because we didn't have a lot of stuff done, hose testing, pump testing, things like that, because of COVID.
I know you need this stuff, okay, there's no doubt about it, I just, I just, it's kind of stayed.
And I might remind you guys, I got it on this back page, we, we know the numbers are declining in the fire service, did you guys look at what the tax base gives up, but the paid fire department?
Yeah.
Pleasant township, you think people's going to be happy if they ever have to go to pay in a hundred, one thousand, one hundred and seventy percent more to have fire coverage? I mean, we save a lot of money by being volunteers, we try to run with the budget that we got, but I mean, it's, it's expensive, it's very expensive to run a fire department.
So, for the benefit of myself, and I hope maybe some other people have this question, you, you said earlier, you can only go to the trustee that you support, but.
That's in their district.
When you're running a fire, fire's too big.
Because.
But things don't make a difference, do they?
Every, every township trustee funds the department that covers their area.
Okay.
So.
Just like Wade, Wade Hughes would be down here.
Wade Hughes would be for Jeff Craig.
Travis Miller would be out, I think, for Ward, or would he be, no, he'd be decent for Craig.
Yes, he'd be great.
Have you gone to either of the, the community foundations?
Uh, we went to the community foundation last year to help us replace air bottles that we've got to replace, they've got to be on a ten-year replacement, so we went to them last year, and we got money from them to help with air bottles, I mean, that's, that's the next thing, PPE is, it expires and you've got.
Does there any kind of grants that you remember?
We've never been able to get any, but, I mean, we do get a lot, a little bit more money than what other counties and other small fire departments give.
Because of the river, but.
But I'll be honest with you, I mean, grant writing is not my cup of tea.
Oh, it's not mine either, I'm just asking.
Like, I, I can't afford to pay somebody to go write a grant for me, I mean, we see that, or eat broke.
This, I got to tell you, commend you, I'm the most thorough asking for money that I've ever gotten since I've been on council and I've been on here for.
And that's why I had to do this, because I'm not a good public speaker.
Yeah, but you, but you did a good job on it, the only thing I don't know is how much you have in your savings.
I've got a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in our savings, and I've got to look at replacing a truck, and if anybody's ever seen what a fire truck costs, you're four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, like I said, let me find it here, our trucks, nineteen ninety-two, that's one of our main engines out of Enterprise, main engine out of Florence York, two thousand, twenty-two-year-old truck, the one we just had repaired, nineteen ninety-three. Um, the big aerial we got to have for Belterra, that's a nineteen ninety-eight, and by NFPA standards, they're supposed to be taken out of service when they're thirty years old.
That's, I was, Belterra, I mean, does the ISO rating affect Belterra at all?
Um, if, few of the older council members may remember this, but one of the stipulations from the State Fire Marshal's office for Belterra was either we had to buy an aerial truck, or there had to be four paid firemen on station at Florence all the time, I'm trying to remember who was here that night.
Nobody was, because I was in the crowd at home, with Lisa was in the crowd.
But if you remember, the State Fire Marshal come down here and reiterated that.
Yeah, with, they paid, they gave you.
They gave us a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Yes, to pay that truck off.
And then the next two meetings that I came to, there were different fire departments here asking for money, so because we gave surprise money.
They got the latter.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to have fire departments asking, I mean, there's.
So your one fifty-five you have in your savings, you're going to deduct thirty-one, thirty-two thousand.
I'm going, I'm going to take, yes, I'm going to take out that, yes.
Then you're really down, right?
Yes, I, I, I'm trying to feel the pain too, yes, we have been very frugal and tried to keep our money.
I, I'm, so what about?
I don't think we've created one off.
I'm going to say no.
No, I can imagine.
We ran over courthouse.
What about emergency?
Harold, I got a question on the profit loss.
Yes.
Uh, the, ground, it says grounds and.
Yes.
For several years, it was, what, you know, a thousand dollars, three thousand, but then last year, it jumped up to thirty-four thousand.
We could put a concrete pad in at Florence, which.
Is that the building and stuff down there and everything around it, so that's?
Yes, it's upkeep, upkeep on that.
Is that like a one-time hit probably?
That's a one-time hit, and honestly, we thought we were going to get some money chipped in from the then York Township trustee, and when they found out that what he told us, we had to pay money back because of the Belterra, the tax situation, so we ended up eating what we thought we was going to get from that.
Yeah, because they were going to have, they were going to have all shit.
Yeah.
That one, that one takes, that trustee takes the hardest hit on the, the settlement, the property tax part up there, they do take the hardest hit of the county.
I, I don't want to come and ask guys, but I'll be honest with you, we just done a fundraiser two weeks ago, very, very good turnout for the community, but after expensive is three thousand dollars that it pays for one set of gear. I can't ask these guys, these guys give ten hours a month before they will make a call, meeting first Tuesday, or meeting second Tuesday of the month, training third Tuesday, truck maintenance fourth Tuesday, that's before they ever make a call, you're ten hours in volunteering your time, I can't ask them to come up there and do this all the time. I mean, they, they got lives, they got families, everybody works jobs, they got families, we're just trying to do well in our community and help our community by what we can by giving our time.
When I was on Fire Chiefs Association, the conversation was about like, I think I was on there when the firehouse just burnt down, you're not going ironically, we're going over.
Firehouse?
Yeah, firehouse, friendly counties, one of them just burnt down, like two years ago, three years ago.
Oh, definitely, definitely, yes, and that was the idea behind the Fire Chiefs Association, is they would help cover the expenses of that firehouse.
The, and the Fire Chiefs can't help out at all with this thirty-two thousand dollars. And the fire chiefs can't help out at all with this thirty-two thousand dollars.
Not from what I've got from our representatives.
You, you got any idea here on that board?
Yeah, how much money they got? I recall that, I thought it was about a hundred and fifty thousand in their savings. Sincerely, I thought they had, I'm gonna guess, last one, what they said, about sixty, seventy?
But like I said, I mean.
I'm just gonna just run it off.
They've still gotta carry insurance, they still got bills, and I know I've heard a lot of comments about this safe trailer we pull around. But I tell you what, I would start putting money out of my own pocket to keep that program going, because it teaches kids how to get out of a burning building alive. The worst thing a kid can do when their house is on fire is me, as big as I am, walk in there in my gear, a face mask on, sounding like Darth Vader. What's that kid gonna do? He's gonna get scared and hide. It teaches them not to do. And that trailer's gonna have to be replaced before long, and that's what the fire chief's funding is part of that.
I'm just, I had no point in seeing this fire tower go in. I think that's a terrible, terrible decision. And I just want to make sure we're not sitting on a quarter million dollars in the fire chief's association while you build this fire tower that doesn't need to happen. But wherever it's gonna go, I don't know where it's.
I mean, I wouldn't come and ask, but like I said, I don't have a grant writer can get me a hundred thousand dollar grant. I can go down to a community foundation, probably. I wouldn't wanna wear out my welcome. They get five thousand dollars, but that's not gonna get us where we need to be for this and make sure our guys are safe and they got the PPE they need to go in a building.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good with it. We're getting gear and obviously the truck, you didn't, no one could have buying for that.
That was my next question.
And, and that right there, just to give you guys an example, that's a nineteen ninety-three truck. We couldn't afford to buy a new tanker to put in Florence and the other two were rusted out. Me and Mark Driver both drove to Pennsylvania and bought that truck, I believe, for forty-five thousand dollars. Three years ago, we just put a new engine in it.
What was the engine for that?
Twenty-one. Twenty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Now, what's special about that is that engine couldn't be pulled out of that fire truck. The way it's built, they rebuilt that engine inside the fire truck. And the quote we got was for sixteen thousand dollars until they got tore into it and found out the heads were bad. And once they found out the heads were bad, we had to spend the extra amount of money for that.
Did all this come out of your pocket?
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't bring a balance statement, but we had thirty, thirty-nine hundred dollars in our checking until we get our next draw from. And I'm not even sure when the next draw is.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, to match them. So, spend thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three, twenty-four cents out of our portion of sale revenue.
I'll say. Go ahead.
Any more discussion on this? As we have a motion on the floor from Lamb's. Thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, twenty-four cents from casino revenue. Uh, second that motion. Hold on, favor, raise your hands.
Thank you all.
No, I do, you do. Presentation.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you all, right now, our sale process. Okay, uh, funding request. This is from, which one county, Historic Society. And so, I've run this so long that I.
That was really interesting. Okay, this whole book that I gave you is kind of gives you a little overview of our organization. We are a membership organization and we do a lot of things that are just for the general public. And what I'm coming to you for is for some, um, funding towards some work we need done at the Tebow Farmstead. Uh, we have three buildings. We have our historical museum, we have the river history museum, and then we have the Tebow Farmstead. And, um, in the last two years, we've had to put a new roof on each of our building, museum buildings. Uh, we painted, um, the farmstead and, um, and then we also had to do, um, just some top pointing and such, but we really have a lot to maintain to keep up the buildings. But right now, we're dealing with water abatement issues at the farmstead. I'm sure you're familiar with the look of the farmstead and has that two-hundred-foot-long wall all across the front. Well, about forty foot of it has collapsed and it's made it all these years, but now we have had extreme rains and such, and it just has been pushing the stones forward. And so as we repair things, we are putting in, um, drainage pipes and such around to divert, um, the water from there. In the house itself, in the kitchen area, and I didn't put that in this one because I was trying to split it between, um, two different situations, and I thought we had that one handled. Um, the kitchen area is partly earth burned and, um, we had swelling up on the floor and turns out groundhogs had been under there prior to the thirteen that we've already killed that have been under there. Okay, and they had packed up the dirt around the timbers which rotted, and then so it made the floor buckle, and so Herschel Richto, who was our contractor on the house, um, donated his time and materials to fix all of that. And literally, the day they were, um, working on that, um, the flooring, we got that really heavy rain and it's, the water just came in, uh, the whole area that they had just done, but it was, it's a, not even a crawl space, it's only like a foot fall. And so they put in a sump pump right away. So all of that is not part of that, but what we've done now is we're going to go to the Bevy Switzer County Foundation for repair on the front wall and then to the community foundation to rebuild a wall that's behind the house that will divert that water also. So, the five thousand that I was asking for, we would be splitting it between the two because we, um, um, need a match whenever we apply for a grant, so if we could put twenty-five hundred, um, to each one as a match, that would help us be able to get the grants that we need to do that work. Uh, so far as the usage of the farmstead and our museums, we are, uh, open and free to the public year round. We have groups come, um, and we do day camp and we, um, well, when Kyle was here earlier, I thought, well, we have, um, sophomore leadership kids as part of a program with that. They're having an invasive species workshop out at the farmstead, so we do, um, make it available to people who need it. And there's no admission to any of our things that we do. And so we just need to maintain what we have and we are preserving our local history. History isn't important to everybody, but we hope the culture of the area is to you. And heritage tourism is also an important facet of the economic development of our area. And so our sites need to be kept up and functional, so that is what my request is for.
Good job, Mark. Can I ask you that? I have three questions. Who owns your property?
We do. Um, okay, are you talking about the farmstead? That was donated to us by Dow Chemical. When we first purchased a hay press barn, because that's what we wanted to preserve, was because that was truly the economic development. All of our downtown area, the bigger houses in town, were all built during the time when hay was the main agricultural crop. And so to preserve one of these, that ones were over two hundred and there's three left, and so we wanted to preserve that. And so when we started looking for a site to, um, rebuild the hay press barn, um, we discovered the history on what was then a vacant property, um, that had been the Bear families for about fifty years. When we checked the history on it and found that was where Ulysses P. Schenck's wife, Justine, grew up, and that's where they had originally emigrated to. And the barn that's already on that site is a hay press barn, but it doesn't have the press in it anymore. And so we went to Dow Corning, um, once we found the history of that piece of property, told them what our project was and they donated it, so it's been deeded to us. They do have a provision, if we did not follow through with making it into a living history museum site, that it would go back to them with any improvements that have been made. And that was in two thousand and one. They visited about two years ago. They had a whole group of men in suits came and, and, uh, they were very impressed. In fact, they offered to give us more land next to us if we wanted it, if we had a plan. We're kind of where we can only do what we can do right now, but eventually I'd like to think of something there, so we have buffer property beside us, but that, so we own the land.
Okay, so your land that you own is not an asset to Switzerland County?
You do not receive tax funds from it, if that's what you mean. Correct. It's in a hundred and fifty-five acres.
Comes out of the commissioners taking any looks at this. It's all on you, the historic, right?
Yes.
Okay. Who, who's your insurance company?
We use, um, it's, it's through, um, Hummel, Hummel Insurance.
Who's Hummel?
Indiana Farmers.
Indiana Farmers.
I think that's who they use.
So in the insurance company, especially historic companies, historic, when they, when they do the historical regulations, insurance, insurance companies have, um, fund giving. Did you know that?
No.
So maybe you should reach out. I don't know, Indiana Farmers, but a lot of them, State Farm, they have these gifting programs inside, because you're, you're, you're carrying with that insurance. You might want to check that.
I will check with them for our next.
That may, that may help you get. And then third, who writes your grants?
Me.
You write the grants?
I've gotten over a million dollars in grants since.
Would you ever be willing to write grants for the players?
Do you know how hard it is for me to do what I have to do? I just feel like.
If you can find a million dollars in grants, I'm sure that we can all sit down and figure out a way to talk to you.
A lot of it's local, um, and, but I've gotten some grants from the Indiana Office of Tourism Development and the Jeffers Foundation out of Wisconsin, the National Trust. But I'm seventy-two, I'm winding down, you know? And I have about all I can do to just keep, keep our things going. But all I did, I learned it myself. You read the prompts, you see the information they need. It takes me probably ten times longer than anybody else to write a grant, but I make sure every question is.
Must be pretty good, pull a million dollars.
Hold out, yeah.
What, uh, so this looks like our donations every year? And then last year, we, we lowered the donation amount?
I don't have the twenty twenty-two's in front of me. I have the twenty twenty-one, so I found it, to how much.
Last year you gave us a five thousand. Last year you gave us a five thousand dollar.
That's out of the casino revenue matching, we give a percentage. It's about a percentage. This is above of y'all, the percentage you are. They usually come and ask for something.
So five thousand was already budgeted for this year?
Um, actually, well, last year, I was about to, I was like, our, this budget, we have like a.
There's two budgets. There's the gifting and then there's the Belt Air thing.
Yeah.
Belt Air's thing is the one that we could cut to six million. And then there's the gifting that comes on top of that.
That, that we take out of our money and usually we gauge about ninety thousand dollars to you.
What I'm asking though is, where's this thirty-seven hundred coming? Is this what we did last year?
Revenue sharing.
Well, that's out of revenue sharing.
Okay.
That's a percentage, you know how we give a percentage to the schools, the townships, the Historical Society, the VFDG. It's a percentage. That's what she gets out of that because we lowered it to six million.
From the casino.
Yeah, from the casino revenue. So what we need to be, the five thousand would have to come out of councils.
This is all I had from Suzie, what she gave me to go buy in the old sheets.
I'm gonna give you this, because we, we used to always get a little sheet that shows, uh, I couldn't find twenty twenty-two, but it, what it does for me, it helps me see, it has on there like the, uh, out of casinos part of the revenue sharing, what we spend out of it for us. And it has the benefits and everything on there. So I'm gonna show it to you because it's really helpful.
Is it, didn't I give it to you guys a couple of years ago?
This one?
Well, this one right here.
No.
Yeah, this, it's a different one. Just for me, it makes it easy for me to know how much we have to give away.
So with your operating budget for this year plus your expenses, you're gonna, you, you're a bust, I mean, you're.
Our operating budget is about fifty-eight thousand for the year, and so that's just enough to operate all three places and, yeah. And, and twenty-five percent, well, you know, twenty-five, almost half of it, tourism has funded us. So they have been very helpful. You know, without them, I don't know what we'd do. Um, yeah.
Oh, just wanted to get into the motions for five thousand dollars. I'm here, not, I'm going to. Yeah, I made a speech to him.
This is enter county, this, this is what we talked about, did you hear that?
I don't get into it. My, my boy went down there for school anyway, he had a lot of water.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll say.
Okay. All right, there's no more discussion on this, right? As Andy made a motion, you get five thousand dollars. To that Switzerland County Historical Society, that motion second, always second. Hold on, favor, raise your hands. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your mark. Yes, thank you. Andy, this is second. Murray, Matt, anyone, say passage.
Hi, how are you all? Um, I'm assuming that you all got the question, okay, and on all that. I was just gonna pass some of these, if you could just take one, pass one around, it just kind of tells you a little bit about us. Um, so just kind of an update on safe passage and who we are. We are a domestic and sexual violence, um, victim and support services. We are the sole, um, support service for the six counties that we serve. The six counties include Switzerland, Ripley, Franklin, Ohio, Dearborn, and Jackson counties. We've been around since nineteen ninety-seven, and in that time, we have helped some sixteen thousand victims and their children escape from a lifestyle of violence. That number continues to increase. We, um, help these people in, in different ways. So we have a shelter that's based in Batesville. It's a thirty-bed shelter. We are often full, and those people come to our, they come seeking emergency shelter, and there we provide, um, we have six suites, we have a communal living with a family room, a playground, we provide meals, we provide, um, transportation if they have issues getting here, even if they're going to court, we will get them to that. Because a lot of, we do not have public, uh, public transportation in this rural area, the six counties, basically. So the transportation aspect is very important that we do. The other service we have is, um, we have a toll-free twenty-four seven, um, helpline. Um, last year we had, uh, almost seven hundred calls that we received through that. It's, uh, real important that we get the, that number out, the awareness of who we are and what we, what we're doing. Because we know that the more who know about us, the more we can serve. And then the other way we serve is through, um, what we call non-residential programming. And so you have your shelter or residential programming, like I mentioned, but for those who don't need emergency shelter, they might need support, so they'll need it in other ways. And so we'll help again with transportation or getting them to courts with the hospital services, uh, response, um, children's programming, uh, further education, housing, job applications, that sort of thing. So that's, and a lot of those that stay in the shelter, then will transition to our non-residential programming. And, um, we find out that the more they stay in shelter, the longer they do, the more we can help them, more positive outcomes, and more likely they won't return. And on average, they'll stay in the shelter for about thirty days. Um, the other part of our miss, mission is, uh, prevention. We want to stop the violence before it starts, so where do we start with that? With, with the youth. We go to a lot of the, well, we're actually in all the schools in the six counties that we serve. And we've been pretty busy here in Switzerland County. We were at the high school and the middle school, and we do, um, healthy relationship programming, like what's, what's, um, normal in a loving relationship, because a lot of kids have seen some things and heard some things they shouldn't, and, and we want them to know what is normal. And then with the, the younger kids, we do, um, asset or character building program, because we know that the more assets a child has, the less likely to engage in negative behavior, be it violence or drugs or alcohol in, in the future. So we do a lot of prevention programming throughout the county, and we also do officer training, lethality training, um, with your officers here that can, that counts for their continuous education, uh, through the state that's required. We have a good relationship with them, with the courts, prosecutor office, um, and the sheriff. Um, I included a letter from him that's in, in support of what we do. He, um, says that we're invaluable. He says he, he's just, says I didn't know what he would do without being able to refer clients, or victims, I'm sorry, to safe passage. And sometimes if they're short staffed, and it often happens, we'll meet them halfway or something if we need to transport them, so we have a good relationship with them. And so our, my, our request for this year, um, the, the monetary request is ten thousand dollars. And that's based on our state rate. Well, the state rate is a hundred dollars a night, an overnight stay, and based on how many clients we had from Switzerland County. And then. And then the other part of it, so we had thirty-six from, thirty-six overnight stays, so times a hundred, you can do the math. And then the average, the other part of it is that non-residential programming I was talking about. So we had two hundred and three service hours, and we base that, um, request on the average social service worker at, wage and times the number of hours that we served. And then I also added about, about ten percent, thirteen percent of incidentals, which would be for that, that outreach I was just talking about and that prevention part of it, the fuel, um, to get here, the, um, oh, some of the little, the extras. You know, if we're gonna do an officer training session, we might want to have snacks and that sort of thing. Um, we need to advertise. We need to have an outreach program. So that's where that, that money or that request is coming from. I, I did want to bring up where, where our funding mainly comes from is through the state and federal funding. We get about seventy percent. Our biggest cost is personnel, so that covers most of it. Unfortunately, this year, we're facing a significant budget reduction from the, um, federal and state lines. And, um, I, I blame it on COVID, because, um, they had to, um, we get some of, there's a Victims Against, Victims Against Criminal Acts, um, funding source through the federal government. We get, when, so when someone has a, a case, there's a court fee they pay. Victims rights groups like ours get a portion of that. So when COVID and the pandemic happened, you know what happened? There weren't a lot of court cases. So, so we're seeing reduction. We're doing different, running different grants to, um, cover some of those unfunded expenses. Um, we're, we're getting some success with that, so I'm happy about that. But, um, so that's, so then, and then the other part of it is we try to raise money through, you know, local county and local county governments. We do fundraisers. We have some great support from some faith-based churches and civic groups and through individuals. So, um, they, they do a good service for Safe Passage. And I, I guess over, not over, overall, I'll just say we had a hundred and forty-eight in the shelter this past year. Uh, we served six hundred and thirty-six through a non-residential programming that I was talking about, almost eight hundred on our hel- hotline. And, um, we had almost four thousand overnight bed nights. Um, so it's quite a bit. And so if you have any questions or, um, thoughts, or I might be able to answer. Always, I always want to invite you to take a tour of the shelter. It gives you a really pers- perspective of what we do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty interesting, I think.
Look at your bud- I'm looking at your budget here for counties and cities, and it says. Nevermind. I figured it out.
Mary, you, I, I appreciate you tying all the big numbers together, but let's talk Switzerland County. So you, you helped sixty people here, and thank you for that. As you're saying, the cost by state rule is a hundred dollars a night, right?
Yeah, that's what they recommend. That's what they, that's how they base their funding for us too.
And how many nights would a person, let's see, average person stay?
The average person's, average person stays, it was thirty days, thirty days. Um, we don't kick anybody out if they don't have a safe place to go. We've had people stay there for six months. We've had some people stay for a day or two. Um.
So you're saying that thirty days?
On, on average. So.
So sixty people, we're talking eighteen hundred days?
No, no. The sixty, when I said that we served sixty people from Switzerland County, that was also through the, the helpline, the, the toll-free number. Okay, and also through the non-residential programming and through the shelter. So it was combined. So we did not, we had thirty-six bed nights, overnight stays from your client, from.
Now we're at thirty-six bed nights.
Yes, thirty-six. So.
Thirty-six.
Times that by.
But those thirty-six, could have spent thirty days?
No, no, thirty-six bed nights, thirty-six overnight stays total.
That's thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yes.
You're asking for ten.
Yes.
Thousand.
Yes. And then, so the other portion of it is coming through the non-residential services I was talking about. So the non-residential is for those who don't need emergency shelter but do need support. A lot of times the shelter clients will transition into that, and so we had two hundred and three service hours, non-residential for Switzerland County.
See, I, that's, that, when you come into, we Switzerland County, that's.
That's what you're interested in.
I appreciate that you work with six other counties, but I don't operate with their money. We take care of taxpayers' money in Switzerland County. So ten thousand dollars is a chunk of change for us. When, when you come in, I want you to focus, be hard on Switzerland County, what you did for Switzerland County.
Okay.
Okay, to give us to that ten thousand.
And it's, it's on that sheet.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's right, um.
But your numbers don't get you.
Um, so you, if, when you said, please reference any data points.
That's right.
There are four shelter clients who stayed for thirty-six bed nights.
So this is one.
Total of two hundred and fifty-seven.
Second page in.
There. Do you see it?
So if you took that and turned that into, you have it in a spreadsheet, you can look at for numbers? Or is it just this?
I, I have that in.
It's in, it's in the third page in there.
Third page? There are ones.
Um, I don't think I, I just.
So it's, it's, okay, so this is verbiage broken out here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so for me, I, I like to see it broken up as.
You would like a spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
You see what things are going on. Now, let me ask you this question. How many other groups do you go to in Switzerland County for money?
We go to, um, BV's Switzerland, um, County Foundation.
How much do they get?
Well, it depends. It's, uh, it's basically project-based. Uh, it has to be a project. Um, they gave us twenty-five hundred dollars, um, just, um, in February for our, our van, the van, or not van, SUV, SUV. They, and, um, and they matched Rising Sun Regional Foundation helped, well, they gave twelve thousand for it.
Okay.
And then Community Foundation of Switzerland County, so it's two different foundations, you're probably aware of. Yeah, I had to get kind of used to that. Um, they, I've asked them, um, they gave us a big portion about two, three years ago for our HVAC system. Um, it was, uh, it's almost seven thousand dollars. And they gave that to us, actually, and so we did that, but then they've also given us like two thousand dollars recent, well, not recently, maybe last year, um, year and a half ago for, um, art therapy workshops that we wouldn't, wanted to conduct in Switzerland County. So we do that, and I'm also sensitive to, um, it has to be a project. It can't just be, um, general or whatever. So it has to be like that. And, and I'm open if there's any other ones. Am I missing that?
Any churches?
No, well, uh, I, I don't think so. I don't think in Switzerland County.
Sure they don't have a church that goes to in Switzerland County?
It, um, and that, we do have several churches, probably about fifteen throughout, but throughout the six counties that do on a regular basis, like a hundred dollars or fifty dollars a month, which is great. But I'm, I'm not positive if we have it firm specifically from Switzerland County.
How many employees you have?
What about twenty-eight employees? That's cool and part-time.
Trustees give you any money?
Oh, I'm working on it. Yeah, I am.
Have they given you money?
Your trustees?
Yeah.
Oh.
No money from trustees?
I don't, I'm, I'm pretty sure they haven't. I'm pretty sure. I actually do, um, a campaign in the, um, first quarter. I just sent it out. Everybody got one in, in, um, March to all the trustees in the six counties, because, um, there's, there's money there. And, and, and my point when I talk, talk to the trustees is like, it, because I know a lot of it's for the fire department, I get that, but it's also to help indigent or people in trouble. Well, these are people that are also in trouble, but we can help them so they won't come back, because we work with them on education and jobs and that sort of thing. And, um, we, we, we get quite a bit from the trustees throughout the six counties, but not so much from here.
Okay, but you don't know if you have or haven't received money from the trustees?
From the, the Switzerland Counties? Um, I, I don't think, I'm, I'm about seventy percent sure.
About seventy percent sure?
We, we, I, we have, we have fifty trustees in the, um, six counties, so that's why it's not all. I know that, I know some of the big ones that gave, but, yeah, it was out of Franklin County.
Well, I, I really didn't. I like how it's broken down for Switzerland County residents, bed nights, and then, uh, non-residential services. We had it all, comes up to a amount eighty-two sixty-nine. I'll, I'll round that up. You know, you do have the outreach and stuff. I'd round that up to eighty-five hundred. I'm, I'm good with eighty-five hundred. So I'll make a motion for eighty-five hundred.
How'd you look for eighty-five hundred?
Well, it's eighty-two sixty-nine for Switzerland County residents. They came up with, I was rounding that.
Is this funding history coming from the county, from our county that shows on here?
That's, yeah, that's what she's.
Yes.
So that's the, the bed nights at the state rate, plus the hours, the non-residential services at their social work pay rate. It's all figured out right there. I'll make a motion for eighty-five hundred.
I know it's five hundred, but I, 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 I think I'd feel better with just eight thousand. Simply because she can't tell whether or not she got money from the trustees, how much she's getting from the, the churches. And I'm saying this to, those are things, if you come next year, bring that detail with you, because it would help us. I've heard through the community that you do get money.
Hang on, hang on. There's a motion on the floor. You can call for a second. And if there's no second, it is.
You're right, you're right. Go ahead. Okay. There is a motion on the floor then. My Lance, give eighty-five hundred dollars to Safe Passage. Is there a second?
I'm gonna give a second just for a discussion.
All right, so Lance.
There's a discussion about his motion. Let's hope I can make a second so we can talk about his motion. And my discussion is, uh, is your payroll, same thing as personnel expenses, one million, forty-six thousand dollars, five hundred ninety-six dollars. You said there's twenty-eight employees, some of them are part-time. Even if they were all full-time employees, that's thirty-seven thou- over thirty-seven thousand dollars an employee.
Over thirty-seven thousand?
Yeah, each.
Um, that, yeah, that seems a little high. Um, the personnel is probably including the benefits.
You got employee benefits, put that for a hundred forty-seven thousand.
I couldn't remember how we broke it down.
She said that the state covers seventy percent of the budget.
Yeah, um, like salaries. You know, even my salary is part, um, through a, a grant in part. I would say almost, almost all of our salaries are, but rent, um, provided. But, but mine, like, part of mine's twenty-five percent. There.
All right, all right. That's your thing. Discussion. No more discussion. Okay. Motion on the floor for eighty-five hundred dollars by Lance, Safe Passage, second by Andy. All in favor, raise your hands. Post.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is Jamie Brown, Lifetime Resources.
Her last, but last, your last.
She was sure, okay. Let's just go ahead and do some. Their request was for.
One more, one more.
Yeah, there were, there were another one that she's supposed to come back to. Who else has gifted her? Guys, I, I, we never asked that question as we're hearing tonight. Um, we need to find out what our community is giving. Yeah, these are our taxpayers that give to the churches. They're giving everybody.
We're not churches. We don't, we're not here to, we're not here to regulate private funding.
It's, 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 it's the county's money, and people think they're giving it for this, this, and this. We have a duty to make sure we understand before we just give out money to outside entities, we need to understand how much they take care of our people, and number two, when you add in the total, we've never asked that question before. We don't know trustees. Tonight, we're hearing, and nothing against them, but we're on seventy percent sure that our trustees have it. Our trustee money is, what, where's that come from? Yep, Switzerland County. So we need to go back and make sure we're not double-biffing on people. We haven't done that before. That's okay. We could start doing it now. That's wise. That's being a good fiduciary with your money. So I think we asked this woman, I think Andy's right, we asked her, please come back and tell us your fault she was getting the money from, and this request, and she didn't have that information at that time. Uh, she's not here tonight. I guess she tabled us.
They have to come down here every meeting, you got questions, and we can't, did you got a call or email?
I wish, like, was that good that I could pick up the phone?
Did you call, did you call or email her?
We had, we had a meeting with her. She was here at the meeting.
I mean, did you have questions about her request? Yeah. Did you call or email her?
No, that's what she left with, was to come back.
I don't remember that. I mean, you know, I'm sure that was a question. I felt like there was something else on this one, but I knew whoever was asking her to come back.
Yeah, that is a very important question. Did she?
She didn't put that in this anymore somewhere, did she?
No.
Um, are you sure?
I think it's a good program. So I know some people who use it and depend on it. And I know that they're, they're partially state-funded from the state.
I don't think she had much information on Switzerland.
You have the city, how many people, I mean, how many people did you service, what you caused?
That was the subject of the man.
Yeah.
This has total, sir, it does, oh, wait.
It's not broken.
Switzerland County, sir, three hundred and thirty-six residents right here. What it says. On that bike cart. Page.
Or front. I mean, they're asking fifteen thousand. Last year we gave twelve. That's what I had written down. Because they asked you fifteen in the previous year, in twenty twenty-two, we gave you twelve last year.
Twelve bucks for this right here.
Twelve bucks. I might let five out of the summer, okay? That's, that's what I, that's what I had written down last year.
What was, was this?
Twelve bucks, I think. In fact, I thought she made the motion for that last year. I, I, I know, what we had sort of briefed out.
I'll, I'll make.
I don't feature.
I'm gonna make the motion, yes. Um, I'll make the motion that we give them the same amount, given that it's just four thousand five hundred.
One second, Jeff.
Okay. So this is for Lifetime Resources. They said you made a motion for twelve, twelve thousand five hundred. Lance, second. All in favor, raise your hands. Post. All right.
That is a, man. Was that twelve bucks or five bucks?
Go ahead, Ray. Okay. Next on agenda is Kelly Jet, CAC. She's not here. She's not been here. This year, if I recall correct. They are asking for a total of two thousand dollars, uh, showing this, eight last year.
They just got a grant, so.
Yeah, well, they got a half thirty-dollar grant.
So that's for the new building, though.
That's for the new building. That's nothing to do with this.
Sure it is.
No, it isn't.
Spin it, also.
And.
Toddney.
And to, Matt, to, to your point there, I actually reached out to the trustee in town and asked about this. He didn't, he didn't directly give CAC money, but he donated to the person running the ship. So, I mean, that's what he did. I didn't reach out to any other trustees.
Did the cause, he donated to the cause, the same thing.
Yeah, that's what he was donating. That's what we, what he did.
Whether it went to a specific person, it went to the overall.
It went to, and went to the cost of, yeah, raise money, you know, that's, and that she, and Lance, she did that for two, eighty, a hundred. So that, that's what we did last year. We gave eight last year, they're asking for ten this year.
Aren't they building a new building in Jefferson County?
Yes, which I think is nicer for us, because ours go to Dubar. It's in, uh, and I have been there and seen that facility. It is very nice.
They have a facility in Jefferson County now, but it's in the old grocery store.
I was just comparing our county donation compared to the much bigger counties. Quite substantial.
There are some counties that are generous with them, and some are not at all, but they still serve.
You got a, Jefferson County also has the CASA that comes into play with the CAC.
What's CASA?
It's kind of the same thing, kind of, sort of, but it's more another program. Lawyers, that kind of thing.
Like, you're just looking at the work county, right? Swissoin County, Ripley County. Yeah, just the county. But you're not, that, that, I mean, did you look down through there with the Madison prevention and Madison, or city of Madison? City, yeah. Just to get a better feel for it, you know, we still give a lot of money to this. Well, ultimately, the city's probably getting their money from the county.
Hmm, I'd say it's getting it from the city.
Yeah.
I mean, they have utilities, they have.
True.
Property that gets paid to the city.
Yeah, I think they, this is a group that also had money from BB, I don't see BB on here.
I can't imagine BB.
Don't think they did.
What, what you wanna do, folks?
I'll make a motion to Matt last year.
That's your.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. CAC, you're making a motion.
Second, man.
Matt already got it.
Oh, Matt already did, sorry.
But you're making a motion, eight thousand dollars to CAC, that's second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hands.
I'm understanding.
I'm saying, okay.
Stick my words on the board.
Okay, six votes from on and out, okay. Alright, take care of that.
It's on the back of the safe passage.
Yeah, I've got one that's like.
This is the one we had, we used before, but it didn't have the total that she has on that sheet.
Alright, that does it off of the funding request, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, let's go to, next on the agenda would be Judge Boyd's preparation request. I believe it was for five thousand dollars for supplies, which we asked in discussion during old business, all that. Uh, talk about that. By, hey, again, I'll get back to you.
I'm willing to make a salad.
This is for supplies. Yeah, this is for supplies, yes, here it is, I'm sorry, you gotta go to my. Yes, that's for supplies, uh, when we moved, or Jamie, I hate to ask you this question, but you're sitting in the audience.
When we, when you moved everybody over to the tech center, did you tell each one of the department heads they had to pay for their own fax lines and everything, or did you guys supply that?
I don't supply, but I don't, I don't owe that.
We paid for our own, well, the judge paid for ours. We didn't have a fax over there.
Why would the judge be paying for yours?
Because we were all part of the judicial system.
So there wasn't a fax line?
Not unless we went upstairs and took Dwayne's office.
Fax line, it's at the tech.
But we could, not that we could use.
Twenty twenty-three still use.
I, that, that's where my mind is at right now, that's what I.
You still, yes, people still do.
Wow, I'd shut that down.
Okay, you call the state and tell them, because I suppose clerk's office gets the majority of theirs.
The state's faxes?
Yeah, when we do background checks from the FBI when people are wanting.
Well, if you have a cyber attack, fax is coming handy.
I mean, we, we, we locked the documents up in an office upstairs because they're supposed to not anybody sees, but yet we faxed them. I'm not sure I understand it, but I, I do the clerk's office.
It goes to, um, secret, I mean, it's not like it goes to the public, it's going to the state, not.
They're sent, they're sent into a secure office.
Yeah, it's not like we're, or they are, I'm not in that office anymore.
I mean, I hear, I heard with group, so I heard Judge say paper costs extra money.
Yep.
We talked that you're budgeting for the same group that you budgeted for the last three years. You never added money because you came in under budget in your supply account every year the last three years.
Never used that.
So just because you move, you're still ordering the same supplies. So you come down to the courthouse, you pick up the paper that was there, and you walk it back to your group. How do you aim for more?
Well, that, that's true, it's tripled in the first quarter.
Yeah.
It helps.
Eighty-eight percent of his budget's gone? Something's wrong here, guys.
There's an email, S. A., him and I corresponded, got the report a little bit. He, uh, said about the, with the probation department being down there, it was problematic, I guess the, the work is huge, you know.
So probation department and the tech center, or?
Just to get the location, I mean, I, I don't know, I guess they're, he's already back upstairs, correct, or not?
Only probation guys upstairs.
Jeff and Natalie are, they're upstairs.
So that's the problem, is that they're over here instead of over there. It's what's causing so much.
Randy talks to him, I didn't.
I'm sorry, Dale.
You spoke to the judge about it being problematic, not.
Yes, that was the reply, that you take it.
I mean, I, I emailed him and just to make sure there wasn't like, like desk and chairs or something that we would buy capital type things, and they're like, no, it's, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Basic supplies, I mean, they talked about cartridges, the paper, the, um.
Still using cartridge.
The services for the, for the fax, uh, paying for Zoom meetings, I think that maybe wasn't in the budget.
They're using two copiers now, I do know that.
I mean, it's just, just a bunch of things, I mean, eight, seven.
Pay for Zoom.
I mean, eighty. Eighty, eighty a month or eighty?
Per subscription to Zoom.
Are you kidding me? I do Zoom all the time, I don't pay eighty bucks a month.
There's a, there's a fee they're paying for Zoom.
Well, what was you putting in there?
Does the, uh, the person that is watching the meeting have to pay? Because I don't ever pay, I do Zoom, I do Zoom. I don't know if the host has to pay something.
I just, I, I just don't get it, but how long? Maybe we ought to just ask Judge Green to detail, and tell us how he used that, that first four thousand dollars, and why we need five thousand more, that. It can, Lance just said, it's not on furniture, it can be a big cost, but it might even be understood, but you're talking the basic supplies. You order the basic supplies every year, you come and you pick it up and you, you move. Paper's paper, folks. So now, now the paper costs more because you're over in one building versus, how does that work? Somebody wants to share the math with me, I'm, I'm.
I, I don't understand the cost difference, but I'm, I'm kind of inclined to, um, if, if his budget is empty in the supply.
He's got thirteen hundred dollars left.
But, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to giving him half of the five thousand to run him the rest of the year and see how it goes, he might have to come back in and ask again. I don't know. I don't know why, why it's, for someone that's never, having the courthouse NMS and being.
Courthouse.
I really don't know.
They should be back in the courthouse by the end of May, so although.
That's only in a month, so maybe we should do nothing.
Should go away, whatever they are, if that's the true reason.
Yeah.
That's thirteen hundred.
Eighty percent of your budget in ninety days.
I think it's three hundred, there might be thirteen hundred.
Thirteen.
So he has thirteen hundred left in his budget? I'd say we do not.
Well, and I tried to get him down here and he just had his reply, he has, I think, some kind of commitments on Wednesday, Wednesday evening, so, uh, I don't know, it's, it's.
Did you touch it up?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and it's, there's something they did this year, I, I was sitting, I hope it's a one-time thing, would happen, move and come back, and I'm, I'm good with twenty-five hundred. Let them take care of it, I mean, they don't spend it, but, you know, it's still gonna be in the general fund, so.
Appropriations for five, but we can go.
Yeah, I, I'd go with twenty-five. I'm, I'll make a motion for twenty-five.
We don't have to give them all of it, he's asked for five, that's something we have to give them all, that's like everybody else asks, first of all, let people get all of it. I mean, I don't want them to not have the supply that they need to do.
I just would like to understand what you spent it all on.
I would too.
I mean, that's a lot a month, ninety days? I don't, I don't hear anybody else ask it, but I'm asking that question.
Uh, I'm very interested to.
What, what in the world, all the other departments that moved, we, are we gonna get a bunch of other departments coming to us for supplies?
We don't know how much that was. That's Marty. Probably, you don't get Marty listening.
No, we did it.
Does not.
Jeff set it up.
County fund money, yeah, I'll take that one. It's just.
Okay.
Yeah, but he, he made a motion, and I, I'm gonna second it, because I wanna put it in the bin.
Yes, I'm with you, so, alright, motion on the floor, it's about Lance. Get twenty-five hundred dollars to circuit fund, duh, 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 forty-two eleven for all the supplies, that was second by Lisa, all in favor? Please raise your hand.
Where's this money gonna come out?
Those posts. About two. Okay, um.
Alright, now that that's done, because the vote's done, I do, I do have one thing. We agreed, we voted on it in January, you ask for appropriation, you are to come to this meeting. We, that was in the notes, it's January first, we ask for you to detail your budget. So, I just throw that out there on appropriations, that's what we've asked for, if another appropriation comes into the auditor's office, please ask the individual or tell them it won't be voted on. Because we just voted on something, we agreed, that's not the case, I mean, I can write, I can read exactly what we, what was, the motion was, if you want.
But they are, your, your department is sending out emails, so, much, that's, I think, uh, the defense.
Sending it out to the person in April.
Has anybody responded to any, anything?
Not really, a little bit.
So, apparently the class budget is okay, except for.
Judge, right there, I mean, I, I would, for the record, I'd like to read that again. My, my motion on the January council meeting was taxpayers and council should have knowledge of unexpected expenditures from elected officials and department heads that manage budgets on a monthly basis. A tracking report should be created and communicated during monthly meetings from the auditor's office so that the taxpayer and council are aware of county depart- department debt occurrences. I'm making a motion for the auditor to deliver an ongoing monthly report to council of unexpected expenses causing year-end appropriations with explanation from the budget manner, move, manager moving forward. And to post the report monthly with the approval of the budget manager and the council. That was the motion that we all voted on, it was accepted.
And I agreed with that, and two people called the judge and asked him what the money is for, and he told them. Now, has he shown us what he spent, where he spent it?
That's the part that I made the motion, I said you have to show it.
But he did tell us why.
Telling us is great, that's not what I asked for, I can mention, Lisa.
I know.
Said you have to bring, we, nobody here can tell us, nobody can tell us what he spent the money on.
I can send you a transaction report in the morning of what that fund is.
But you can do that.
Well, it's in my office, so. That way everybody knows what he's sent it on.
Okay.
I mean, and that report came from my office at the first of the month, and there are items that are in the negative. Yes, I mean, you got an issue with S C E R, but, I mean, you're also in the middle of trying to hire someone up there, so. That's. Lack of knowledge, not known how to.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that, that, please, sir.
Okay, let's, this meeting will be watched, odd.
We had a meeting today, was talking more about the new highway one oh one. There's been a lot of environmental studies right now. It could be two, two to three years for us. Finalized, and we know how the exact route's going to be, it's real slow.
Do you know, you do know or you don't?
No, they don't, they don't know for two years.
Go ahead, tell them they say you know and see what happens.
I'll say you said you knew.
Everybody does.
But they got an office in, that building on the second floor, they're funded from Wednesday, if anybody's got questions, but.
Okay. Great. Okay.
Questions? EMA met in, uh, emergency management, and we talked about, uh, if you correct that propane tanks, he's got some training for that for everybody to, uh, barge, for rain fire, taking out, they have fifty drainage, which is a chemical that you put in with the water that makes the fire grow out quicker. Let's see, can we get that? A lot of us participated here, um, they, they did do, joined in the exercise that the state did, it was an exercise at the Belt Row on March the eighth, I think, and, and they participated in that too. Lot of discussion about the tornado sirens, do we need them, do we not need them? Um, he's still up in air about that, you know, to, to, uh, do a grant to get tornado sirens that are out and about. They don't do any good unless you're in, outside, you don't hear the siren when you're in the building.
Where?
Anywhere, you know, set one out by the enterprise, put one in the tangerine, we're talking about, you know, they can get so many of them with the grant, but then you have the cost of maintaining and service of them all the time, and are they really worth it? Because they go off, but if you're not outside, you're not gonna hear it anyway, is part of, part of that, um. Still talking about getting a possible backup repeater for the county, um, he is going in for back surgery. It's back surgery this week, so he's gonna be out and about for a little bit. Um, the only other thing that I have is that the park board is down a member, which is a county council, uh, position. We had the person that county council is supposed to, or that we, it was Jeremiah Haynes, uh, resigned. And so we need to put a notice in the paper for that, for someone that's interested in sorting on the board, and then I think next of all, we should be appointing someone to that. And it would be to finish Jeremiah's term up, which, and I think with the end of this year.
That's what that is.
Yeah, so it would be someone that would finish Jeremiah's term up the rest of this year, and then next year, you have, because that's a four-year appointment for that. So that's the only other thing that I have.
That should all have that on the agenda then.
Yeah, well, rail has to post it.
Have to put it in the paper.
Okay, alright. Anything else?
We're talking, this group didn't, didn't meet, we meet, uh, many.
Alright, myself, our chief association, we did not have any meetings, so. Mayor, Andrew.
I got to take a tour of the. Connection. It's gonna be unbelievable.
Why do they leave the lights on twenty-four seven?
Um, remember that said, it's something to do with thinking your safety. I'm sure it's got something to do with that.
Nobody being in there.
Fangalism or something like that, I mean, yeah.
During the day, you know, when they weren't working on it and everything, on the weekends, nobody there, but the lights are on anyway.
Probably.
In the day, I see them having a lawn all night long.
I was, I took my, I took my tour in the daytime, it, I did, it's a good thing it was.
Yeah.
But anyways, I took this tour, and the classrooms on the bottom floor are really nice, really neat, really big. On the up, on the upstairs is gonna be unblue. They got IU involved in a section of it, they got Purdue involved in section of it, and I'm just using IU and Purdue loosely, some of it was like I E P Y or something like that, or. But the big classroom that, I'm not exactly sure who's gonna be running that, I guess it'd be Wayne Hughes' section, but they got him in there for, but, uh, they're supposedly putting in at least four, or up to four simulators. You know, guys, I'm about to say. Have you ever done it or no?
No, I've heard, uh, one of them's running overhead crane, right?
Overhead cranes, dozers, heavy equipment, they're putting in these simulators where there'll be cert, not certified with it. It looks experienced with these things, and some of that will carry over if they decide to go across from. Walking in the door.
Way to be good.
Which is awesome.
Alright, can't wait to go wreck a crane and, they gonna let you drive, I, I hope so. Are they still under budget? Yes. Doing really well.
Good.
Really well on that part of.
Alright, anything else?
That was it.
You too? I think you served four together.
We have not had a.
No meetings, Eric? Okay. Are we even done?
I don't think so.
We, uh. Has anyone been moved for the, uh, bridges or anything like that? We haven't spent any money yet.
We have not spent any money, or Jamie hasn't given me any bills anyway.
Thanks, Jamie.
I'm getting tired of driving around.
We got, uh, we had quotes for the engineers were presented at the mystery meeting, uh, on the second, whenever it was, and they weren't, they weren't all the same, the same services, what we'd asked for is for engineer plans and, uh, scope of work, and what we got from two of them was from the entire project, so we tabled it till it's coming. So we tabled it till this coming meeting, uh, to get just the initial work. For drawings.
Yes.
And, uh, scope of work so that we can then send those out. But I will tell you that, to, to, too, that we got quite a bit higher than what I, just for the engineering work was quite a bit higher than what I thought it was gonna be. I think it was about double. But that's, trust me, well, I can't say that.
He said thirteen, thirty-four, thirty-five.
I probably said somewhere twenty or twenty-five. It was probably a bit higher than that, so.
Okay, and, um, S C E R, we, just a general question, do we feel pretty good about them making the budget this year? In last year, we spent a lot of time on it and just where they are with the consulting, trying to help them.
You know, well, as I have not looked at their budget, so when Gil made that comment, I have no idea.
No.
Uh, what she.
It's, it's her way, I know, not just.
Other than labor. I know we're all, a lot on labor purely because of sheer amount of overtime, because of lack of resources. Uh, we've got basically two guys working more hours overtime a week than they are straight time. Uh, just, uh, I can give you a quick update as well. We started the interview process for the replacement, uh, director. This week, we should have those interviews filled. And, and right now, we're just interviewing for an interim director. Um, obviously that candidate, if they work out, would also be considered for the full-time position. So we, uh, we did two, yeah, I think it was yesterday we did two. We got one tomorrow, and then we've got two more after, after that. So we'll finish those this week. Should hopefully have that interim position, at least an offer made by the end of next week.
What, what about that administrator position? Did we fill that or are we still?
We're going.
Paying somebody else?
We're going with, uh, we have a person doing it part-time currently. Short answer is no, we didn't fill it.
Okay.
Um, the consultant doesn't feel like that if we staff the way that he feels like we should be staffed, we potentially don't need that administrator position. So that's potentially a position we will not fill. Um.
That's Suzie's own position.
No.
That's a administrative rating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was specifically for S C E R.
Well, was that pushing, was that the position put in the budget?
Yes.
It's, but it's not listed on her. Was not sent to the state. It was in the budget ordinance, but it was not sent to the state.
The state gets the salary ordinance, right?
It was not sent to the state.
I don't.
I don't know. It was not put into Gateway.
Who owns Gateway?
Good news is we probably won't need it, but.
Yeah, that was in your, that was in commissioners.
Well, it's in there year before last, so I don't know why it wouldn't, it wasn't there last year in this year, so I don't know why.
We did that one in the H R at St. John.
I don't know.
Who owns Gateway?
Uh, the auditor.
With, with nobody in the position of.
I mean, it's gonna be.
So that's probably why they did it ever.
But it was on salary.
It was.
It's on the salary.
It was the salary that we had set. It's just not being used, that it wasn't.
Which if we aren't gonna need it, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, it's not being used, I guess.
Anything else?
That, I'm good. Yep. Does the audience have anything? Any input? No, questions? Alright. Well, I will call for, uh, motion for adjournment, please.
Please just come like that. I heard, oh, Andy, you got it. I second it.
Okay, Andy made a motion to adjourn. Lisa second. All in favor from adjournment, raise your hands. Alright, and that's a wrap.